It's December 8th. Councilmember Austin Maxwell has our prayer and our pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time tonight. Please be with us. Give us the wisdom and insight to do what is best for all of the citizens of Murfreesboro. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I trust all as well with you. I'm here to recognize the recipient of the Stars Awards for November. The purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize those employees who go above and beyond their normal calls of duty. Sometimes that means providing extraordinary services to our citizens. Oftentimes, that means they may run toward danger or put themselves in harm's way. The recipient of the November 2022 Stars Award is our own Lerico Flowers. He did just that. He ran toward danger by thinking of the safety of everyone at Patterson Park Community Center. Lerico has been with the city since July of 2021. He's currently the Assistant Recreation Coordinator at Patterson Park. He is also the son of our own Public Information Officer, Mr. Larry Flowers. I'm sure he's back there just smiling awesomely. According to the Superintendent Janelle Jenkins, here's a brief summary of the incident. On Saturday, November 19th, a small brush fire was ignited at the grounds of Patterson Park. Once the staff was notified of the fire, Lerico immediately sprang into action. He didn't freeze up. He didn't look for someone else to do something. He grabbed the nearest fire extinguisher and ran outside to proceed to extinguish the fire. His quick response prevented the fire from spreading and successfully ensured that all the safeties of the customers and staff at Patterson Park was assured. Lerico, you were informed of a serious issue. Without hesitation, you did something about it. And that's what I call taking care of business. On behalf of the city of Murfreesboro, we want to thank you for your quick reactions. Mayor?
All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. You have seven items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed before we vote?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into old business. We have ordinance 22OZ36 rezoning property along Haynes Drive. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. The map on the screen. You'll remember, this was before you back in October, on October 20th, for a public hearing and a vote on first reading. It was to rezone these two parcels that are currently zoned RS15 along the south side of Haynes Drive to PRD for a PRD called Beaumont. The plan at that time consisted of eight single-family detached homes that were going to be developed as part of a horizontal property regime. So each home would be able to be sold individually, but they would all be on one lot of record and everything outside the homes would be common area. The council at the meeting on October 20th discussed some concerns regarding the density of the project with there being eight units on this property. Since that time, the applicant has worked on revising the plan and now proposes four single-family detached homes on individual lots of record, so a total of four single-family lots. Staff reviewed the request with our legal department and determined that no additional public hearings were necessary based on the fact that the proposed density was actually decreasing from eight to four. However, we did want to, since the plan was changing, we did want to take it back to the planning commission for their review and consideration. The planning commission considered the revised plan at its meeting last night and voted to recommend approval of the revised PRD zoning request to the council tonight. So before you tonight is the request to consider the revised plan. No additional public hearing is necessary. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel would like to give you a brief presentation on the revised plan since it has changed from October.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, council members, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Thank you, Matthew, for the introduction. As was mentioned, this is Beaumont. This is a product that is Brian Burns and Kelly Wilson and Matt Wilson have been working on. It's gone through multiple renditions. As most of you remember, it was eight homes on a single property. And then we had an internal circulation that went through a lot of critique over fire access and making sure it was safe. So we did several generations, making sure that plan worked. And after last time before you all, the recommendation was to move to six units if that were possible. And after reviewing all the different components of going to six units, our clients had elected to go to four homes, all single-family detached. And I'll walk you through the overall plan for those homes. We won't go through the whole presentation because I know we have a lot going on tonight. So in essence, these are the four homes. They're all very in size, but they all basically have kind of a cottage-style, carriage house, craftsman-style front. They're deeper lots, but they do have front porches on the front. They have front porches on the rear. They all have detached garages in the back. So there's a three-car detached garage on the rear of the property behind the home. And there's a courtyard in between, between the house and the garage itself. There are two extra parking spaces for guests that are basically loaded, front-loaded, as you move to the back of the property. So we want to make sure there was adequate parking within the site for guests as well. And so one of the things we did to make sure there's some precautions, there's been a lot of concern over Haynes Drive's expansion. Right now, it's slated to be a three-lane road in the future with a potential bike lane. So we wanted to provide enough front setback that allows for that to happen. So we've got 38 feet of dedicated rideaway that allow for the future of the road expansion. And then we pushed the homes back, really past that setback, around 44 feet back. So we have, actually, I think it's 48. We have real estate to make sure that we can accommodate that. These lots are very deep, so that was an easy concession for us to make to pull the homes back. Because of the deeper nature of the lots, we justified all the driveways to the right. The closest neighbor is closest to the house floor, which is on the lower part of the drawing. That neighbor showed up at our neighborhood meeting. That home is pretty close to that property line. So we are choosing to put the one-story house, the house number four is a one-story, closest to the adjacent neighbor. On the other side, there's a substantially large home on the adjacent property. That homeowner has been to our neighborhood meetings as well as was a council. They are of support in terms of they like the fact that the homes are a price point that's very favorable for the neighborhood, but was also wanting to make sure that we did our best to respect his property as well. Last night, planning commission, we do show an exhibit in our pattern book that shows some foundation landscaping. Mr. Burns attests last night that this will be a very lushly landscaped. These homes are fairly expensive. He wanted to make sure that there's assurance that the landscaping is going to be really, really nice on these homes. So I'll walk you through the four product types, the home types, so you can just see them. As was mentioned, they're narrower on the front, pretty deep in the rear, but they all are kind of carriage house style. That neighborhood is really eclectic in terms of it's an older neighborhood that we're going through along Haynes. So along Haynes, you're going to see some new homes, some Menfield homes, some older ranch-style homes. It's quite a variety. These homes, because of the craftsman nature, carry a little bit of a timeless nature to them. So we feel confident that they're going to, they'll fit well within the fabric of the neighborhood. So this is house number one. That's the furthest one to the top of the site plan. House number two, as was mentioned, front porch, craftsman style, and then a back porch on the rear, again with that three-car detached garage. House number three, again, craftsman-style front porch, tapered columns, brick foundation columns as well. So and then lastly, house number four, this is the one story that is closest to the adjacent neighbor. So in the process, we've gone through, we feel like we've hopefully met the expectations of council by reducing the density. We appreciate the planning staff and their input, and I think we have accommodated the right-of-way concerns. We've accommodated the density concerns. And they'll all be individual lots with their individual driveways. That'd be the only thing that we've kind of worked through as well. Originally, I had one driveway, one point of entrance onto Haynes Drive, so now we have four. But with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. I thank you for hearing our request, and I'm available for you.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree?
No question. I'll just make a general comment. I think it's, I think the council was pretty clear. We thought eight was too much. So I appreciate y'all coming back, not with six, but four. I think it's a better fit for the area. And you've got a 40-foot front setback along with the rideaway. So I think it's a better project. And I want to say thank you, and thank you to Mr. Wilson, Mr. Burns, for listening to the council what we wanted.
And their individual lots of record instead of HBRs.
Yep.
Is that a motion?
That's a, so moved. Waiting on Jamie to...
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank y'all for working so hard. All right, we have, we'll move into new business now, and you have rezoning for property west of Memorial Boulevard. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here we go. Got it queued up. All right, the subject property is located west of Memorial Boulevard. It's west of the Family Worship Center and the intersection of Memorial and Osborne Lane. That intersection of Memorial and Osborne currently has three legs that are occupied by public streets, both directions of Memorial and Osborne. But the fourth leg just goes into a driveway, a private driveway that, the subject property is predominantly undeveloped. However, there is some type of construction company that operates on the property, and you see some dump trucks coming in and out of that private driveway on a regular basis. Property is zoned RS15. There are several parcels that comprise this request. You'll see the area shaded in blue on the map before you. It's bounded on the north side by the Regency Estates subdivision, which is zoned RS15. It's bounded on the north side by the Regency Estates subdivision, which is zoned RS-15. On the west side, by the Regency Park subdivision, which is zoned RS-15. And on the south side, by Palmer Estates subdivision, which is also zoned RS-15. Property to the east, along Memorial Boulevard, is zoned Commercial Highway and Commercial Fringe. These parcels actually include the property along Memorial. You'll see the area here, but that is not actually a part of this request. It is proposed to remain zoned Commercial Highway and Commercial Fringe. The applicant is requesting to zone the property to PRD, Planned Residential District, for a single-family subdivision entitled North Ridge Park. There are proposed to be 96 single-family residential lots on the property. And I'll pull up the concept plan. See, 96 single-family residential lots in this subdivision. The blue lots identified are a minimum of 12,000 square feet, and they will have side-entry garages. There are a total of 85. The orange lots, there are a total of 11, will be a minimum of 10,000 square feet, and they will have front-entry garages. Staff, from the very beginning, reinforced to the applicant the importance of maintaining consistency with the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of, in terms of the garage location. Initially, the applicants were seeking to do the majority of the homes with, with front-entry garages. Staff worked with the applicant to get that number down to 11, although it would have been staff's preference from the beginning that all of the lots would have been, would have had side or rear-entry garages. But we did, we were able to work with the applicant to get them to a maximum of 11 lots with front-entry garages. The proposed development will be required to build the public street that will go out to the intersection of Memorial Boulevard and Osborne Lane. You'll see it here on the map. As I mentioned, that's a signalized intersection, and staff believes that that connection is key to this development. We've met with numerous potential applicants over the years, and everyone that we've met with, we have reinforced to them that any development would need to include that connection out to Memorial Boulevard to ensure the safe movement of traffic from this neighborhood onto Memorial Boulevard at a signalized intersection. Making a left along this segment of Memorial can be difficult, especially at peak traffic times. What that will also do will be to allow the existing residential neighborhoods to have an additional, or to have additional access points to a signalized intersection. Through this development, the surrounding residential lots to the north, south, and west will have access through this development to that signalized intersection. One of the things we heard of, heard a lot about during the planning commission public hearing was with regards to the connection points into this subdivision. There are a total of five stub streets into this property. You'll see here to the north, here and here to the west, and here and here to the south. Consistent with our guiding documents, staff informed the applicant to make those connections. Our subdivision regulations, our design guidelines, and our major transportation plan all state that connectivity is important, and that allowing traffic to have multiple ways to disperse is important. And so we have attempted to honor those documents by requiring the applicant to connect into, to extend those stub streets into this development. That's generally consistent with the message that we send to applicants each time there is a stub street that goes into their property. We held a neighborhood meeting on this request prior to the planning commission public hearing. The planning commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend its approval on November the 2nd. And before I forget, this request is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035, the proposed update to the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. The existing adopted comprehensive plan actually recommends for auto-urban general residential, which would permit a maximum of eight, upwards of eight dwelling units per acre. We're recommending that that be scaled down in the proposed update to the comprehensive plan, which would, which we are recommending the suburban residential land use character, which would go to about three and a half, four dwelling units per acre max. The proposed density of this development is at 2.7 dwelling units per acre, so it is consistent with the proposed update to the future land use map at, with a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Clyde Roundtree has a presentation that he would like to give as well. Are there any questions for me right now?
I have a couple of questions.
I do, too. Go ahead.
Okay. Seems like it's a pattern where we are allowing builders and developers to come into our city from other states, and this particular one is from Texas. They come in and they build these fabulous subdivisions, and they leave after they have their money, and they are not, I feel, concerned about the repercussions and the problems that these subdivisions follow. I know we've done a hydraulic report, and it showed no streams at the time. I have taken some notes. It showed no streams, but I know this property we're talking about, it's divided, and the drains are going two separate ways. And the drain toward Tower and Regal, and the water, it is continuously standing on Archer and other areas. I've received so many emails from neighbors showing how high the water is, which is really a scary thing when you see that. And there appears to be known and documented that there are a lot of drainage concerns in this area. And I'd like to know specifically how this project can improve that, when we seem to have an ongoing getting worse problem with drainage. How is this project going to help the drainage problem?
Ms. Gels Harris, I think that will be up to Mr. Roundtree to present that information. He's got some information on the drainage, and I will let him respond to that question if that's okay with you.
Matthew, this is RS-15. So, in a normal world, if this was to be developed with 15,000 square-foot lots, how many homes would be going into this particular development? I've got a number in my mind up here, based upon my hillbilly math. What's your number?
Well, as Mayor McFarland knows, I use Auburn math, so...
Okay.
I don't know what's better or what's worse, so...
You got a new coach, so things are looking up.
Yeah, so you're like, hey, Matthew, your last coach did that, and he got fired. Your basketball coach did that, and he got a show cause out of that, so...
Yeah, I'm keeping my mouth shut on our new football coach. No predictions. I actually put a, put a pen to paper on that this afternoon, and I would predict that it could accommodate about 75 lots. So I think the increase is probably about, probably about 20 lots that they're proposing over what the current property would, would allow development of. And that's just, obviously, that's rough. When they're going to larger lots, it would probably require some redesign of the, of the street layout, which might affect that.
I had, in my mind, 39 lots at 12,000 square feet. That's 468,000 square feet. 57 at 10,000 is 570,000. So that's a million, a million 38,000. So dividing 15,000 in that figure, I came up with 69, so call it 70. So either way, there's, moving from RS-15 to PRD, it's a net of 27 more houses, which has issues in and of that in terms of schools, roads, traffic, and things of that nature. The side-entry garages, now, was that a request by the city that we wanted side-entry garages? And if so, is that what affected the setbacks on this particular property?
Yes. So, so we did, as I mentioned, we did push for the side-entry garages. They had a much greater number of front-entry garages when we first started this process, and knowing the character of the development that was around there, we felt that the front-entry garages were out of character, and so we pushed for side-entry garages. And those side-entry garages are driving the reduced side setbacks, because to get the, the turn radius of the cars into those side-entry garages and enough room for those cars to back out, back in and out of those, of the garages, you need a certain amount of separation on one side. So you're, you know, while you're going to have just a five-foot setback on one side, on the other side, you'll be 20, 22 feet from the house to the property line.
It's a 25 for the house, from what I read, and 35 for the garage.
That's correct.
But that's what drove it, is the side-entry. It wasn't the developer saying, "I want this." It was staff saying, "We want side-entry garage."
We actually recommended that they go with the five-foot setback if it was going to be able to accommodate more side-entry garages.
Okay.
We thought, we thought that the side-entry garages were of greater importance than, than maintaining a 10 or 12 and a half foot side setback.
Okay. I've got questions around the drainage. I guess last question for you on the stubbing out of the streets. Have we ever, as a council, said, "I know it's under code that says we have to connect all the stubbed-out streets," but have we ever said, "No, five's too many, six is too many, let's cut it back to two, let's cut it back to three"? Have we ever done that as a council? Shane, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember the...
I can't remember, "We'll cut it back."
We did...
Okay, then we stopped.
There's some neighborhoods, I want to say, is it Breckenridge, which has more people, only has two entrances? I mean, you live...
I think, I think in recent years, we've been very consistent about, about extending those stub streets. The one instance that I can remember where we did not require that was in the Arbers at Compton subdivision off of Compton Road. But I think the prevailing thought there was that, was that that was an amendment to an existing planned development where those extensions were not all required. And so I think that to kind of keep a, kind of maintain the status quo with, with the decision from 2006, we did not require all those to be extended. But I think, in general, over the last 10 or 15 years, we've been very consistent about, about requiring those, those stub streets to be extended.
But it has been done, I guess, is what I...
Yes, it's been done. I can't think of a, but I think we've done it before. And if we haven't done it before, there's no reason we can't start doing it now.
Let's let them give their presentation, and then I think it'd be good to get our public comments, and then anything that we have issues with, we can, we can do that after we hear from everyone. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mr. Roundtree?
Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. This is one of those projects, I'll just say, from my reference point, as far as a lot of projects I get to work on, this is really close to everything I've ever heard that we want. Single-family detached homes, higher-end product, all maestry, quality neighborhood, sidewalks on both sides of the streets, cul-de-sac lots, I mean, opportunities to connect to adjacent areas that have potential areas of issues with congestion. And so it's been interesting to watch this process. And as Madeline said, the developer came, comes from Dallas, and in Dallas, they're doing all front-entry garages. I mean, if they're $700,000 homes, they're still doing front-entry garages, which is very interesting, because we really don't do that. And we appreciate the staff's comments that if we can figure out a way to accommodate as many as possible as a side-entry garages, that's consistent with the neighborhood. So we felt like that was a, that was a concession. We literally, we weren't playing poker, we were trying to do our best, but we went from, you know, we had all front-entry garages, and we went down to about 60, then we kept on whittling away, and every time, that kind of changed the traffic circulation. And so we're really happy that we were able to get where we got to. It's a, it's still viable product for Guy &amp; Holmes. Mr. Chris Lynch is here from Guy &amp; Holmes, if you need to speak to him specifically about their business. But he, he feels like by getting the yield we're getting, it's still a very viable project for them. So I don't want to do anything that would possibly risk them coming into town, because I think this is, this is really what we've been asking for. Even the fact that these are 10,000 square-foot lots and 12,000 square-foot lots, we've seen six and eight come through. We've seen a lot of almost zero-lot-line type of homes. So hopefully, we can support this, knowing that this is really the direction we're encouraging our development community to go into. But as far as the plan's concerned, I think there's a few things that are important to point out. As Mrs., as Madeline mentioned, it's important, the drainage is a real deal. We're going to hear a lot about that tonight. And we also are going to hear a lot about the traffic connectivity from the neighbors. That came up at our neighborhood meeting. It was super well-attended. I want to thank Family Worship Center. They're a great place to host a neighborhood meeting. We were, we had an active group. They stayed there as long as we needed to, and we got a lot of good information, and we feel like we can address a lot of those concerns. So we're grateful for that, and grateful the church being open to allowing us to have our meetings there. As far as the plan's concerned, we've gone through, like I mentioned, several renditions. Some of those renditions were traffic calming renditions, some of those were making sure there's enough distance between intersections where tees come in, you know, streets tee. So we feel like we've met the needs as far as proper circulation within the neighborhood, as well as good connectivity with the adjacent neighborhood. As far as drainage is concerned, we were out there today. We're, we've had a quite a rain event. Most of us are probably still kind of drenched from the last few days. So we felt like it was a great opportunity to get out there to see, you know, what potentially is happening. And so we went out there around lunchtime today, and actually, the two neighbors were able to meet us out there, just by coincidence. We were just snooping around, and next thing you know, we had some company. But we learned a lot. And part of what we saw that we feel like we were encouraged by, by probably about 1:00 today, a lot of the drainage had dissipated, so the water that had been pooled in was gone. So I was surprised. I was expecting to go out there, and, I mean, I brought waiter boots, and I was expecting to be going through like a bog. That really wasn't the case. I was out there with our engineer, Chris McGuire, and we were walking through this. And what we were realizing is that there's a lot of backwater issues, which means that if the drainage is not handling the volume, it starts backing up. So it gives you the perception of flooding and the fact that you don't see that water moving. That water is moving, but at a very slow rate. It's not moving fast enough. And so there's quite a few scenarios throughout the neighborhood, and definitely in relationship to this lot, where water's just backing up. The primary drainage that, that a lot of our neighbors are experiencing some frustration with was totally clogged as of this afternoon. We went out there, and you couldn't see the inlets to the drain pipes at all. So, so that's, that's an existing condition. That's a little off-site. Our site does roll up. One of the things we wrestle with with any kind of new development, we want to make sure that we can preserve that tree line along the property line. That's, that's a win-win for most people, because you get mature trees, you get an established-looking neighborhood, and it really minimizes the impact of the adjacent neighbors. In this case, we still want to do that, but that, there is almost a little bit of a, kind of overtime is kind of burned up, so there's not a lot of cross-migration on this site from adjacent properties. There is a swell, as Madeline mentioned, that goes through the site, and that's been evaluated, and we feel like we can handle that appropriately. We will have a storm pond on-site. Currently, there's not, I mean, there's a, there's a cattle stock pond, but we're going to design it so all of our drainage goes into that pond. The green area that's shown on the master plan up in that top-left corner, that's where all the stormwater is going to be going. It's all subterranean, so there's going to be a lot of piping. So what we found out today, and we may address this again, but I just want to reiterate that, we saw some solutions that we feel like we can bring to the table after our observations today. The primary solution is allowing a few pipes from off-site to come into our drainage system to alleviate some of that backwater. It gives them a safety valve. It was a little bit concerning today. There are a few homes that are literally inches away from getting inundated, and it's really an issue of, it's a maintenance issue over time, that I think there's some of these swales have silted in. We think some of the culverts have been compromised, as far as they may be working at 35, 40% versus 100%. But we got to see it, but I, again, I was relieved. I saw the videos, you're going to see those videos, or see some pictures tonight. I mean, it's scary. There's a ton of water going through. But again, by 1:00 today, you would have known that was happening. You can see the residual, you can see where the high water was, some of the residual remains from that, but there's no standing water. So we've gone through multiple generations to make sure that our client can get what they need in terms of coming to town. We've gone through several generations to make sure that we maximize the amount of lots that could receive side-entry garages. We've minimized as much as possible lots that require front-entry garages. We clustered those towards the center of the development, so they wouldn't be along the peripheral. The large... The larger lots around the development are the larger lots on, in the developments, so those are closest to adjacent to the RS-15. We literally feel like we've done as much as we possibly could do to make sure that we're meeting the need. And then the home types are, again, they're high-quality homes. These are, these will be a real asset to our community. Again, they're going to start 700 up. These are nice. So we're happy to be representing them, that they're bringing something that we feel like is really close to, if we could all do what we wanted to do, we'd love to have these kind of homes throughout Murfisboro. So they do have, a lot of these homes were designed for front entry garages. They had a whole package that they created for the side entry garages. And there are, this is a sample of one, one of what the front entry garage would look like out of those 11 homes. So we want to make sure we represented that in the pattern book. The only thing that came up that was a part of planning commission's concern was there's an amenity area that's basically adjacent to that stormwater area. We originally had head-in parking for that, that you would basically turn off the main road and just park head-in. There's multiple concerns about that from a design standpoint. So we redesigned the amenity area to pull the pavilion in and do head-in parking, but it's a parking lot versus parking spaces along a roadway. We were able to still keep the green space. That was the developer's primary concern, was not compromising the green space for livability to the community. But we were able to, we feel like we were able to make both concessions, the parking, as a parking lot, the green space remaining. Staff's primary concern is making sure when we get into site plan, that all the site distances and triangles are respected, because we want to make sure it feels lush and full, but we want to make sure we don't threaten anyone's circulation from a visibility standpoint. With that in mind, our traffic study revealed that if we pinch these connecting streets down, which is going to be probably recommended tonight from the neighbors, all that really does is puts more pressure on the points that are accessed. So the traffic engineer believes that the more we have openings to get out of this neighborhood, the less there'll be pressure at any point. So their recommendation is to keep them all open, just so there's not some pinch points created by reduced flow through the neighborhood. ROM and the traffic department, they've always been concerned about making sure Osborne and our connection to Osborne across the street, as well as our connection to Memorial Drive, was sufficient. And the section, we're recommending, the traffic engineer affirmed that we are doing the right thing in terms of the connection we're making onto Memorial. They did think there's some things we can do that can even make it better, and that involves some of the traffic lights and sequencing, which was a recommendation in their plan to work with some of the lighting characteristics of that particular intersection. But with that in mind, they thought like this would not be a negative impact on traffic as far as the adjacent. It wouldn't make it any worse. It's going to be perceived as being bad tonight, but it's not going to make it any worse than it already is. And traffic is something we wrestle with on any development. You know, we just know it's an issue, especially when you have existing neighborhoods. We did look at, right now, there's a little concern, because the road sections are 21 feet, and they have pretty radical bargeages, because the drainage is conveying through, but there, there's not a lot of shoulder. And this is a walking neighborhood. A lot of neighborhoods like, a lot of neighbors like to walk. You know, the standard's really 22 feet in a lot of situations, so it's not like these roads are totally substandard. But they do know if there's more traffic, there's a threat to the walking community. But something that we feel like we maybe will enhance that, is we're providing sidewalks on both sides of the street in our development. So I think Northridge will be a very walkable area. So I think that's a positive as well. So I'm available for any questions you may have. We're excited about this development. We're excited about Giehan Homes coming to Murfisboro. And again, I'm excited, because I think this is a lot closer to what we want to have as far as new development. Single-family detached, high-quality homes with a higher-end price point that just raises the bar for us. So we're grateful for the opportunity.
Can you comment on the water courses? There's three.
The water courses?
The water courses, that's in the packet. Or is that more a question for Matthew?
I'm not, what are courses? Can we reference them more specifically?
It's on page 21 in the council, or in your booklet.
Plan book.
Plan book. DF-1A, DF-1B. It's a single water course that directs surface flow northwest towards the Wetlands area. DF-2 directs to the west. I guess the question is, can you explain how developing this area will improve or worsen the current drainage in that area? Because you've got an 18-feet of grade change rolling down. You're going from 582 feet, excuse me, 602 feet down to 582. So when you develop this, are you getting rid of that 18-foot drop, or is that going to be in this development? And then we're putting a lot of concrete and asphalt.
Right.
Where's that water going to go? So walk me through that and walk the council through that.
We, right now, the lot is basically pastoral. You know, it's an old farm. It's got undulation, it's got low points, high points, it's got soft areas, hard areas, not really rocky, which is unique for this site. But the, all the, that cross drainage we're talking about goes to a stock pond that's basically on the northern side of the property. That's been identified. That was identified early to make sure that, from a conveyance standpoint, it's something we can manage. So we had an environmental engineer look at that. As far as, there's a, right now, because of that, as I mentioned, on the edge of the property, there's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of a natural berm that created by just silting by the trees and just the, just the understory of the trees. That's impeding flow onto the site, and so there's some backup water that happens on the, basically, it's on the southeast corner of the site, right where that conveyance system goes through the lot. So from a vantage point of grading, this site will be mass graded. It will not have any sort of roll. So that'll be a major intention on our part, to make sure that the improvements on the property will allow for adequate drainage. Right now, we're planning on all subterranean drainage, so there's going to be multiple pipe systems that'll be going through. Even the recommendation we had today, as we saw what was happening with that backwater, we thought that if we can run a pipe off-site, pull it into our infrastructure, it'll help it become a safety valve for those adjacent neighbors. So as we mentioned often, that if we're doing grading, it's our chance to solve the problems that are created by adjacent relationships. The only thing that would be, again, the only caveat on some of the projects where we committed to, and, you know, we always want to, we always be responsible for our drainage. But on some situations, I tell our, I tell folks that the city has no control over that property right now, because it's not theirs. When we go through this process, we have a chance to right some wrongs or alleviate some pressures, and that's our full intention, that we have a chance to really make this a lot better. And so with that in mind, that's our intention, is that we're handling our drainage on-site. We're creating a stormwater area in a corner where it's going to be well-received, and we're going subterranean with all our drainage. So we feel like the combination of those three things, and Mr. Lynch has agreed to allow us, you know, as part of, on their nickel, if we have some opportunities to create some safety valves that use our system to drain the adjacent neighbors, we're going to do it. Today, it was really obvious. If we had a pipe, or we think we could have a pipe, a lot of that backwater situation would not be happening.
You finished, Mr. Mason?
I've done, Madeline.
Okay. Personally, I don't see how this is going to help solve that water problem. That's just listening and everything, because right now, like I said earlier, we already know this is, and it's documented, that we have a terrible drainage situation. And like I said, the property is divided into two ways. And it drains toward Tower and Regal, but the water still is standing on Archer. And I don't see how this subdivision is going to give us any relief. I can see where it's going to make it worse. And that's an unknown. We don't know right now as far as that property, if the water situation is going to be better. I received several emails with photos, and I drove it, and it's terrible. I would not want my yard to be like that.
Right.
And, you know, I just don't feel comfortable that this subdivision is going to help any of that. And you mentioned that you have a detention pond on, you have a detention pond, but right now, that doesn't even affect Archer at all. So the people on Archer, you know, that doesn't mean anything when you all are talking about you have the detention pond. Speaking of traffic, if I'm reading your information correctly, your boxes for mail is going to be on the front of the entrance, right?
The kiosk?
Yes.
That'd be for the commercial component. Ours is backed by the amenity center.
So, and I can see more of a traffic there, because people are going to definitely stop and get that mail, so that's going to be a...
And that's why we created the parking lot. So now you go into the parking lot, go get your mail. That's, it's part of the amenity building under the pavilion. So it's not, it's not a bottleneck or something that's going to congest.
Right.
And that was, that was a staff recommendation, and I think that's a good recommendation, but we feel like we can accommodate that concern.
And then looking at your, the way the homes are going to look, the homes are not going to be compatible with the neighborhood that currently exists. The 12 houses that has the front-end garages, they don't fit the neighborhood based on the present landscaping. So maybe if the lot, if you do have this project, the lot can go from 12,000 to 15,000 square feet to be consistent with the neighborhood. I just have several, as you can tell, several concerns about this subdivision.
And I really, I, it was really interesting to watch what we saw today, because there was, there's little land islands. I mean, Mrs. Karen's going to be here, she's going to talk. We spent some time, we went into her home, she showed us the videos, but we were watching the water on her video, and it goes, basically, it goes around her house. And there's velocity, the water's coming, it's moving, you know, it's actually has some velocity. And so, but, but it's not going into the drainage well. It's breaching the drainage well, going right into her lot, and basically going around this raised area. That's a really easy fix. And I think that's happening in multiple places where, because of the way the grades are working, obviously, water's going to low spot, but some of those low spots are, some of the high spots are something we can solve. And literally, that's what we're seeing, is that the water kind of breaches out of the swell, it's not using the swales, it's going through people's yards. Some of that's because the swales are silted in, some of this because of some land. But what we're really seeing is that, once that water stops flowing, it starts backing up. When it starts backing up, it starts backing up in people's yards. And so we think we can help that backwater situation. That's what we're saying, Madeline, is that where we think we can put a pipe, it's basically a relief valve. All that water that's backing up, that's what you're really seeing. You're seeing the cum total. It doesn't happen immediately. They said it about 45 minutes after that rainstorm we had yesterday. Within 45 minutes after that, it was a, it was a lake. I mean, there was water everywhere, 45 minutes after. We were there three hours after, and all that water was gone. So that's, the good sign is it's not pooling standing water. It's water that is being backed up, because there's inadequate piping in certain locations. Well, not inadequate piping, piping that's been compromised by either siltation or some sort of, some sort of buildup in it. If we can help solve that, then I think we are solving some of the problems. If we can take the grades down and actually contour the site so we're receiving water, that's a possibility as well. But that, again, I walked away encouraged only because I saw the water was gone when we got there. And when I saw the videos, I realized there are certain areas where water was supposed to be going, that it wasn't going. It wasn't going where it was supposed to be going, because where it was supposed to be going was too high. So I'm encouraged that we can solve that problem.
Can I stand corrected? I don't know of any subdivision that has five entrances and exits. I mean, I just don't know of any. And I think that's too many. The last question, last comment. You said you had a neighborhood meeting at the church?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said it was well-attended?
Well-attended.
And so were the neighbors for this project?
Excuse me?
Were the neighbors for this project?
They were, they were, they were mixed in the fact that they're glad that they're not homes that they would be, that would affect their property value negatively.
Mr. Roundtree?
Yes, sir.
Not to cut you off, but we've had a lot of, we've got a lot of people who are here that will give us their opinion on whether they're for it or against it, so that, no, you're fine. So that way, I'd rather hear from them as opposed to...
Speculation.
Well, not speculation. I'm sure you got an opinion on the meeting, but I see a lot of people who are here, and I assume they're going to let us know whether they're for it or against it. So with that, we need to open the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you get three minutes, or five minutes. If you're speaking as an individual, you'll get three. If you'll do us a favor and let us know your name and address, and if you'll keep all of your comments directed towards the council, we'll get those questions answered at the end of the public hearing. I've got a timer up here, and if, we've got a lot of people who are wanting to speak, so if you'll do me the favor, I'll let you know when the timer's up. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Yes, sir. My name is Mike Bacon. I live on 2814 Archer. I'm the last house on the end of Archer at the dead-end street. I'd like to hit on three things. The drainage concern, the stub street, and the PRD variances. First thing on the drainage concern, I know that this spoke of the event that we've seen the last day or so. I've seen it much, much worse. My house currently doesn't flood in any way, but I have water standing in my yard every time we have a big event, and it always cuts through the property. They're talking about developing down the tree line. So my concern is, with all the new asphalt and everything that's going to be going on, what, how's that going to be addressed? Because it seems like we're always talking about the tower side. And so I'm just concerned about what's going to happen on that southeast corner, and how that water, how that drainage is going to continue to flow as it does today. I'm not disagreeing that it's not blocked somewhat that creates it backed up in my yard because of the field, the way it's done, but something needs to be done to where it changes. The stub street, the concern I have there is the neighborhood was built in the 70s. It's not like on Banner where it was built in, what, 80s or 90s, where you've got streets that are 40-some foot wide. It's roughly 20-foot wide. You're right, it is a walking neighborhood. There's no sidewalks. We have people that, I know they're not supposed to, but they park on the streets. So you're walking down the street, now you're going to be dodging through traffic that you currently don't have. So I'm concerned about it being a through-street, because people would come across to Osborne, into the new neighborhood, cut down Archer, hit Haynes to dodge traffic on Memorial. You know, so that's a concern I have with that. And then the last thing I have is the PRD variances. You know, we're talking about it being smaller lots, but I'm already seeing in the proposals variances that even reduce it smaller with houses that can be within five foot of my property line. So, and if I look at the lot right beside me, I'm concerned that, you know, am I going to have a house that literally I can reach out and touch beside my home because of the variances that's allowed, even less than the PRD number I hear that is 10,000 feet. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Gus Hargit, 2910 Regents who Park Drive. I agree with what Ms. Harris said about the water. More concrete's not going to help the water. And water's going to seek its own level, and if we build a pond down there, I'm afraid that what we do then is create a habitat for mosquitoes. And so maybe we can put some fish in there to eat mosquitoes and do stuff like that. But my biggest thing is the size of the lot. And so I guess, I'll make this as a statement, but it's kind of a question. What's our vision for Murfisboro? Is it more people packed into one small area with more traffic, more needs for more schools? Or is it a larger community with nicer houses, less schools, and a nicer community? When I moved here in, almost 31 years ago, when I got off of the interstate and drove all the way to VA, I believe there were six red lights. I believe I counted them not long ago. There's like 19 or 20 now. And it takes me 30 minutes if I want to go the other side of town to eat. So all we're going to do is compound a problem with more overcrowded schools, and the smaller these lots get, that's about 23 more homes, 30 more homes, that's that many more classrooms we need, that much more going out to Haynes, I mean, going out to Memorial. And the next thing you know, we're going to need two more red lights over on Memorial just to get out and turn left into the subdivision. So thank you for your time.
General Hargit, thank you.
My name is Karen Bingham.
My address is 2903 Amber Drive. I am the property adjacent to the new proposed development in the southwest corner. I believe it's my property that Mr. Roundtree referred to when he said he saw the videos and that it was scary. During heavy rains, my house is surrounded on all four sides by running rushing water. Because my house is the only one, I believe, in the neighborhood that's on a slab. The water comes within four inches of my front door. My big concern is that any additional runoff will flood the interior of my home. I'm very appreciative of the efforts. Mr. Roundtree and his engineer came to talk to me and look at all of this today. And it sounds possible that this could really help. It seems like there might be some compromises that could be made here. But I'm a layperson. I know nothing about drainage and stormwater runoff. So I'm dependent on the city and their planners to protect me. And that's what I want to call on you all to do. So that's my biggest concern. But because I'm also at the dead end of that sub-street on Amber, I want you to know I'm vehemently opposed to opening that. I don't know of other neighborhoods this size in Murphysboro that have six access points for 96 homes. It just seems totally unnecessary to me. I'm not going to try to speak for my neighbors, but I don't think people in Palmer Heights want those sub-streets open. You will not be doing us any favors. The streets, as somebody else has already said, are narrow. They don't have any sidewalks. There are drainage ditches on both sides. It's used for recreational purposes. And it's an older, established, very gracious, lovely neighborhood. Why do we need to have more traffic in it when there are already four other, six other, however many other access points are available in this plan? So that's my two cents. The only other thing I'd like to say is that this is serious stuff to us. It affects our homes and the quality of our life on a daily basis. So I hope you all will just take that into consideration. You all have heard from me on the city council earlier in the week with photos and videos also. So you can see the rushing water.
Thank you, Ms. Bingham.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight and for us to voice our concerns. My name is Pat Bacon. I live at 2814 Archer. You heard from my husband just a moment ago. I can't emphasize enough the obvious. What are our options when this doesn't work? We are laypeople. We are depending on expert opinions. But that's what they are, their opinions. What you'll be doing if you put streets through and asphalt through unnecessarily? I live on Archer. Archer and Amber are both 20 foot wide. There are huge issues with drainage already there. We hope that we will be told the truth, that this is going to take care of the water. I got my boots on tonight. I wish I'd take to walk around my backyards and not wash them off so you could see how high it truly is in my backyard right now. I was told when we bought the property that there was a pond behind me on the property that's zoned commercial, that at one time, 20, 25 years ago, he was approached for a drainage to be put through to relieve some of the flooding on Haynes. And he refused to do that. That's where this water goes now. What doesn't stand in my yard and stand in the proposed property, what little can flow flows when it gets really, really bad. And today's not bad. It goes into that pond. So there has to be a cooperative effort, I assume, because that's part of where the water goes. So thank you for your time. We have a problem. We have a lot of opinions, a lot of expert advice. But you're putting water on your neighbor if you're not responsible here tonight. A stub street, yes, it can go through, obviously. But is it necessary? And what are your plans for 20 foot versus 40 foot? Are you going to take our yards? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon.
Hello. I'm Gloria Montgomery. I live with my husband at 822 Banner Drive. We live in the middle of Banner Drive. And we already have very much traffic on our street. We take the traffic from three schools. We cut right in and through and go to the high school or the middle school. And we feel that if we connect Osburn to, across Memorial and go through the new neighborhood, if you turn to, from Memorial to the new neighborhood, you make a left and you go down the side and you connect right with Banner. And we are the only stub that goes straight through from there to Regency Park. So we have a long drive down there. We have a former police lady on our street. And she looks at the traffic and she says, I just pretty much think it's 45, 48 miles an hour in the mornings and in the afternoons when the schools are picking up or when the yard people come through or FedEx or whatever. And yes, we're a wider street. But we're very much a walking neighborhood too. And my husband won't walk when it's school time, when it's going out or coming in. So we just really are sort of apprehensive about having so much more traffic coming straight through from Osburn down to our street. If I realize that the planning commission has the authority to put a cul-de-sac at the end of Banner and not open it up, that would be one solution. Another solution, if we couldn't not open our hub, which nobody wants theirs open, is when you're coming from Memorial and you come into the new neighborhood, instead of turning left, go right, go around and have some stop signs, and then hit Banner. And that would slow down a lot of traffic. If you come in and go left and then you have a straight shot all the way down. So that might be another solution. So I ask that you will reconsider the plan that greater minds than mine might have solutions to slowing down traffic, not making it quite so attractive to turn, meet Banner and go all the way down. And so, we'd appreciate if you'd reconsider. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
You just say, hey, stop.
That's all right. I walk past your garden every morning, Ms. Montgomery. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Need to borrow your technology. I need to cite my public. David Reed, 710 Banner Drive. Lived there 37 years. So I've seen a lot of growth in the Regency Park area. And Mr. Roundtree was talking about being out there today and yesterday and heard him talking about it's on Amber and all those places. About the water? Well, I was out there yesterday in the middle of the...
You just figured it out.
During the rainstorm and in the middle of the rainstorm. And I saw water coming off of that property onto the stub at Banner, which would be right here. Three inches deep, running over the curb on each side of Banner. Coming around, taking a right, going down Regency. And then the drainage wouldn't handle the amount of water. It would go across Regency, through the lady's yard, across from Regency because there's a low spot in Regency there. And the water will not run uphill either way. But anyway, my other thing here, and yes, I'm for RS-15. I think most of the people at the community meeting was for RS-15. So Mr. Roundtree had a problem with that. So this right here, I can't get it to draw, is where the mailbox key is. And they keep calling that their amenities area. If it's for this subdivision, why does it go up here in the middle of their subdivision? If it's for this subdivision, why do the people in Regency Park have to hear, if you build the 96 homes, 96 times two car doors slam every evening when you're coming home to get your mail? Why is it here in the middle? Or maybe up here near the commercial end of the property? Now, he said planning is the one to decide that. If our planning department put it down on the neighborhood instead of up here on the commercial end of it, I think that's really bad planning on our planning department. I just got to looking at that. But I'm for RS-15 because I've lived there. Everything around it's RS-15. I'm not against the neighborhood being built. We all knew it would be built, there'd be a neighborhood built there. We all bought our homes thinking it was RS-15. I think it's kind of unfair to come in there and be kind of like the bully on the playground and say, if I don't get my way, I'll take my football and go home. So that's kind of the way I look at it. Maybe a bad way to look at it. That's kind of the way I look at it. No harm intended. But the mailbox is here. That's really bad. And you are putting all the drainage back here. And that's just a real bad, the commons area back there. If they have a neighborhood get together, our neighborhood may not want to hear it. Put it up in the middle of your neighborhood and have it for your neighborhood. I really think that'd be a great, maybe the whole plan needs to be looked at. Not just RS-15. Maybe the whole plan needs to be looked at and redirected. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. See you none. We'll close the public hearing. And we'll now consider, where's my agenda? We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ43.
I get Mr. Huddleston to come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor McFarlane, members of the council.
Yes, sir. We've heard a lot from Claude and the neighbors about all this existing drainage issues. And I've got all these emails and texts and pictures and have went over the neighborhood multiple times the past two days looking at it, both in Regency Park and in Palmer Heights, looking at the water. And we heard Mr. Roundtree talk about clogged culverts or pipes or whatever. Can we get some, no matter what we do with this property, can we get these existing issues, infrastructure, looked at?
Certainly. Our Public Works Department, Mr. Raymond Hillis and his team do a great job in responding to those. Quite honestly, in many cases, the neighbors and the residents are the eyes in the field. And so, when they can make us aware of the issues around those things, we get a crew out to look at that and where's an existing drainage system and we can perform some maintenance. We can take care of a lot of that. And so, we'd be glad to refer these over to our Public Works Department and get an eye on the existing drainage systems in and around the Archer and Amber Regency Park area.
All right. I got a couple, not for you. So I don't think it's a secret. I live in the neighborhood. I've lived in the neighborhood. My in-laws live in the neighborhood. My brother has lived in the neighborhood. So I'm real familiar with this area. Walk in the neighborhood just about every single morning. So please don't run over me if y'all. Could be my wife pushing me in front of the car as it goes through. But there's a few things I'm concerned with. You know, we've had an issue in Palmer Heights for some time now. You know, even with the plan that we worked, I think Huddleston Steel was working on the bill, working on the engineering of going behind all the homes in Palmer Heights and taking that at some point, going all the way back to Thompson Lane to get into that drainage system. But that's not been done yet. I'm not as concerned, and like I said, don't run over me if you see me in the road. I'm not as concerned with the stub streets because, you know, the streets that are there, they were intended to be stubbed out at some point. What I am concerned with, I don't like Memorial and Osburn Lane stubbing back into the property. And the reason I say that, there's a difference between this piece of property and Osburn Lane stubbing through it because Osburn Lane really doesn't have any neighborhoods that go, that Osburn Lane goes into that neighborhood. They're all built off of Osburn Lane. And so, what's going to end up happening? Right now, there is connectivity. You know, you've got, if you want to get to Thompson Lane, you can take Regency Drive. You can take Sulfur Springs to that Segal Drive. One of the worst things, my house backs up to Segal Drive, is the speeding that happens on Segal Drive. You can take Sulfur Springs to Thompson Lane. There's lots of connectivity in that area to be able to get out. So just adding the connection from Memorial back to this neighborhood, in my opinion, I don't think is a good thing. I mean, you can get in and out of the subdivision, no problem. So that's my one issue. I mean, Banner already, what you'll end up having is people who will bypass going down Haynes Drive just to take Memorial to go through to Banner, one left turn to get onto Banner. It will be a cut-through street. Now, we do have, in the neighborhood, you do have a couple of ditches that are there that you have to slow down. But I don't think that will stop. The thing I keep going back to, and y'all have heard me say this over the last many months and maybe over the next four years, the good land in Murphysboro has been developed. So all the Murphysboro that's going, or all the land that's going to be coming through has got challenges. But at the same time, consistency is consistency. So if a developer comes in and buys the property, they know what's surrounding the property. So I understand and appreciate the developer coming in, trying to do RS-10 and RS-12,000 lots. But I mean, let's be honest. They're not 10,000, 10,000 and 12,000 lots when you reduce the setbacks to five feet. They're not. So they're not consistent. And when, you know, all of our setbacks right now are 12 and a half to 15 feet on the side setbacks, which means in between your neighbors, by the time you build your driveway, you're going to have 35 feet in between your garage and your property line. And then you've got another 12 and a half feet. So you've almost got 50 feet in between houses. Here, you're going to have 10. And you're going to have five to the sidewalk or to the driveway. So I don't think it's consistent. And look, I get that we get more, doing a plan development, I get that we get the ability to have more say-so. But the bottom line is, with what property costs and what it's going to cost to develop RS-15 lots, you're not going to build a cheap product on RS-15. Drive through the reserve. And you can see the houses that are built on the reserve on 12,000 to 15,000 square foot lots. I probably could agree with some of the stuff that's in here. But unless I'm missing something, you walk through Regency Park Drive and I can't tell you one front-entry garage house. Not one. And I've been almost every single street. So introducing front-entry drive garages, the threshold has been Thompson Lane. Thompson Lane has been the dividing line to where we allow density and we don't allow density. And I'm not saying that because I live in the neighborhood. That's just the way it's been done. So I don't think the development's at all consistent with what we see in the neighborhood. So I mean, if the developer came through and said, look, I want to do 12,000 square foot lots, I may, could be on board with that because I think that's a decent compromise as long as the setbacks stay the same. But I don't like hearing come through, well, that doesn't make our numbers work because that's not our job. We don't do the economics of a project. We just say whether it'll work and whether it won't. So that's my two cents worth.
Shane, I'll go back to what you said when we were looking at the property on Haynes Drive. And it was almost like we were, you know, that went from eight to four. And so, it's kind of, we're going to set a precedent. I think this area is surrounded by RS-15. It's zoned RS-15. And I'm for keeping it RS-15. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny this, defer it, and keep it as RS-15. And if they want to develop it as RS-15 with these beautiful homes, great. But I'm all for keeping it RS-15, the way it's intended. So that's my motion to deny this.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion.
So what are we saying now? Let me just clarify.
We've got to clarify the motion, whether to defer or deny.
Are you deferring or denying?
Are you deferring or denying, Austin?
I'm going to defer. I'm going to defer it back to Planning, Planning Commission. This stays, I'm going to deny. This is RS-15.
Okay. So you have a motion to deny.
Keep it as RS-15.
We have a second. All right, any discussion?
So we deny, he's saying deny changing it.
Yes, it would stay at RS-15.
I just want to thank those folks that contacted. You know, a lot of times people feel like contacting your government officials doesn't make a difference. But every single person that called me or emailed me was respectful and shared information and perspective. And so I appreciate the effort that you took to come tonight and those that weren't able to come tonight that called and expressed their opinions. I think it does make a difference. It's the character of the neighborhood that really struck me. And the one thing that I think we need to have, just for the opportunity that we have, could somebody at staff tell me, one of the questions Ms. Bacon raised, and I thought this is helpful for anybody. What if the options that are presented don't work? That people talking about what happens when the plan, the handling, the water, and those kind of issues don't work? What is the public's option when things don't work as people have planned? Because we really don't know until it's developed. So what are their options?
Right. Well, before we would get to that point, we do have good engineers on our staff who will review. And one of their jobs is to make sure that we're not putting more water on folks than is going on there currently. And so we have a number of PEs on our staff, and they're getting plans from PEs with calculations to make sure that it's not dumping more water on the adjacent property owners than is currently going there. And if, in the future, residents notice that the water situation was getting worse, they would certainly contact the city and we would investigate it to determine if it was a, if it's an infrastructure failure, if there was something about the development that wasn't constructed per the plans. I think it would just depend on what our staff found when they went out there as to how we would handle that.
So call the city, like what just happened tonight. The existing problem that happened before this development came into place, the city staff is going to look into seeing if we can clean out the drains or whatever happens.
Yes, sir. If there are routine maintenance issues in our drainage systems, clogged pipes.
Has to be done.
Yeah, then certainly call us. Call the Planning Department. We'll get them routed to the correct people so that that can be looked at.
Thank you. That was what I was hoping.
Sure. I kind of had a roundabout answer there, didn't I?
Thank you. You got there.
Mr. Maxwell, just to clarify, are you wanting them to come back and develop it as RS-15 or a PRD with 15,000-foot lots?
Well, what's your suggestion, Mr. Wright? I'm not a realtor. I'm not in real estate.
We have a lot more control as a city if it's PRD with 15,000-foot lots. We can control what the houses look like. We can control stuff like that. If they just come up here with an RS-15 site plan and build it, it's built.
Well, they're already granted that under the.
They're already granted RS-15.
They've already got that under the.
I don't think, so I don't think a developer would come through with a PRD on RS-15 because they already have that right. So I mean, the developer would have to meet our design guidelines that we have in place. So. All right, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
If.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to, we'll move to item 10, rezoning property along North Rutherford Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is a zoning request for what was originally developed as the Campus Crossings North apartment complex. It is located along City View Drive, East Main Street, North Rutherford Boulevard, and Alumni Drive. And this property is currently split-zoned. Phase one was zoned as a PRD, a Planned Residential Development. It's in the area colored in blue on the map before you. And the green portion is zoned RM16. This is one of those apartment developments that's in close proximity to the university that was developed with a lot of four-bedroom units, kind of the living situation where you have one common area and four bedrooms. And the people who live in those apartment units may or may not know each other, but it is almost like having four apartment units in one actual unit as it's classified by zoning. So what we're seeing is a lot of apartment developers or apartment owners are coming in and buying these complexes and dividing those four-bedroom units, or as they like to call it, bifurcating the four-bedroom units to create a higher density, but actually have a lesser bedroom count, lesser bathroom count, and replace those four-bedroom units typically with a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit. So there's generally, when we see these, there's overall lesser bedrooms, lesser bathrooms. And if you recall back on June the 30th, you considered a request for a sewer allocation variance for this property to exceed the density allowed by the sewer allocation variance. And one of the reasons why that was plausible, that request was plausible, was because they were reducing the number of bedrooms and bathrooms and presumably the, even though they're having more bedrooms, the impact on the sanitary sewer system. So the number of units will both exceed the sewer allocation ordinance and it will exceed the density that's permitted by the existing zoning. And that's why they are requesting to rezone the property all to a PRD. So there's a portion that zoned CU, Colleges and Universities, the RM16 portion, and the PRD portion for a total of about 16 acres. The property is surrounded by the university campus directly to the north and the university's transit system directly to the west across City View Drive, a variety of different single-family and multifamily residential uses in the area, as well as a gas station and a retail center to the east along Rutherford Boulevard. Really, the footprint of these structures is not changing. The density is changing, and they are making improvements to the property. But the actual development of the property is going to remain basically the same as it is today, with the exception of some upkeep, replacing some landscaping, trying to clean up some drainage issues on the property, things of that nature that Mr. Roundtree will go over in just a moment. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on November the 2nd and unanimously recommended its approval. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, we need to, I'm sorry, any questions?
So this will reduce it by 162 bedrooms and bathrooms.
I believe that's correct. Is that, Mr. Roundtree, is that the correct number?
That's what it says here, so I just wanted to make sure. So there's going to be less people in theory in this particular area.
In theory, yes. And there are variables that, depending on how many people live in a given unit, but in theory.
I wish we could, I shouldn't say before we do, I wish we could go back 20 years ago in every one of these that we allowed to do the open space with the individual bedrooms. I wish we could redo every single one of them. And most of them are coming back through. Yeah. I didn't know what bifurcation was until, you know, this all started.
What you're saying is, is if it was you and you had three girlfriends, it wouldn't necessarily go down. You'd actually plus it up by, you know, three. If you were still in college, that's what it'd be.
Sure.
Be careful, Matthew. Be careful. You're on camera.
Yeah. Sounds like we need to start the public hearing.
I second that motion.
Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, this would be a PRD, excuse me, rezoning request, please come to the podium. Mr. Murphy?
Mayor McFarland, I'm, and members of the city council and staff, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Goodman. This is the second bifurcation project I've brought before y'all in the past couple of years, and I hope to bring you many more. This is market responding to a market problem, and that's, people don't want a unit where they've got to have three roommates they don't know. That's the problem. It's driving down the rents. It's causing us problems, leasing them, et cetera. And so Albion is coming in. What they've asked to do is to bifurcate them. They're going to upgrade the landscaping. They're going to get the asphalt, which is pervious, up and running. If not, they'll replace it over time. And there's a plan in the package to do that. Mr. Roundtree will walk you through the package. And if there are any questions at the end, I'll be happy to answer them, and the team will be as well. Mr. Justin Tringle is here as well for the applicant in case there are any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Clyde?
Just real quickly, as Brick mentioned, we're glad to have these folks coming in town that see the vision of Creighton solving a problem, really. And Albion's been great to work for and work with. As Brick mentioned, you know, we are, it's that math where you're increasing the amount of units, but you're actually decreasing the population. Some of the concerns that have happened with the staff that we work through is that currently, and what we realize with these types of apartments is they, we talked about the death spiral, they get poorly managed because the rents aren't coming in. So they start getting into financial spin, and then all of a sudden, your maintenance goes. And this would be one of those that would fall under that category. We've done a lot of walkthroughs and working with the staff to make sure that there's some assurances. Right now, there's some drainage issues on the site as well. The pervious asphalt has been compromised due to siltation. And so as a result, there's pooling water. We're all motivated to make sure that's resolved. The owners want to make sure that their residents have a nice, clean, safe way to get to their car and get to their residences. So we're in the process of getting that vacuum, scoping out the pipes, making sure the drainage is functioning fully. So that is one of the things that's been a key component, that's been a concern on both the staff standpoint as well as our clients. What we're seeing with the bifurcations, they come in, this is a unique one in that every unit's getting touched, not just the units that are being bifurcated. They're going through the whole complex, putting in low-flow toilets, upgrading all the fixtures, elements on all the appliances. So this is a total remodel for this particular development. So we're excited about that. If anyone needs a dishwasher or, you know, washing machine, there's plenty there. But also upgrading the amenity areas, the pool area. So they're coming in with a philosophy of staying for a while, making it as nice as possible, really kind of changing the client mix. That's one thing that happens with these projects, is that it's no longer specifically for college students. It allows for families to live in these units as well. So it just kind of makes it a little bit more of a diverse population, which allows it to be a little bit more adaptable to, it's not just all college kids and then they'll leave, and you know how that works. So with that in mind, I can answer any questions you have. As was mentioned, there's landscaping upgrades. Right now, all the trash dumpsters are all out in the open at random spots. We're going to organize all that. We're going to make sure the drainage is taken care of. They're upgrading the clubhouse. All the remodeling within all the units is going to happen. And, you know, they're just anxious to get started as soon as possible. They want to start rolling.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. All right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 22 Oz 44.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, let's move to zoning for property along Veterans Parkway. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Here we go. This property should look familiar to you. We saw this back in June, June 23rd, as a matter of fact. Property is located along the west side of Veterans Parkway and along the north side of Franklin Road. There's three parts to this. There is the rezoning of the front portion of the property simultaneous with annexation to CH. There is the zoning to PRD, Planned Residential District, simultaneous with annexation. And then there is the PRD amendment for the existing Villas at Veterans PRD located along the north side of Franklin Road. Back in 2021, that, the existing PRD was approved for 49 townhome units. And that development would tie back into the existing traffic light at the entrance to the Kroger along Veterans Parkway. Early in 2022, the applicants brought forth an annexation and a zoning request for that acreage that's colored in the orange and the red along Veterans Parkway to zone the frontage to Commercial Highway. And the request has not changed to keep it, to have it zoned to Commercial Highway simultaneous with annexation. And then to incorporate that red portion into the Villas at Veterans PRD. Now, what they proposed back in June was expanding that PRD by including seven additional townhome units and 28 single-family attached homes in a horizontal property regime. So for a net increase of 35 units. There were some issues with the architectural elevations. You'll recall when it came before the council on June the 23rd, the architectural elevations were, by the time they got to council, were still not where they needed to be. And I think that council had a great discomfort with the proposed plan, especially with regards to the single-family residential homes that were proposed. So that item was deferred on June the 23rd after the annexation was approved. The applicant went back to the drawing board and considering that his original PRD for the Villas at Veterans was approved with the townhome units, he decided just to replace those single-family residential detached homes in an HPR with more of the same townhome units that he had been approved for on the southern portion of that PRD. So this PRD proposes 42 additional townhomes, so a net increase of seven over the request that was before you in June. So there'd be a total of 91 townhome units on the subject property. SEC, in conjunction with Mr. Harney, also made some additional modifications to the plan. There's one additional street stub to the north to continue to encourage connectivity to the undeveloped properties to the north. There continue to be two stubs to the west for connectivity to the west. One of the things that staff is favorable of with regards to this project is the additional connectivity from that signalized intersection at the entrance to the Kroger to allow people to bypass that intersection of Veterans and Franklin Road and have alternative public streets in the area to provide a good street network. The future land use map, the proposed future land use map update does show auto-urban general commercial along the frontage of Veterans Parkway. So the CH zoning request is consistent with that, with the proposed future land use map. And it shows auto-urban residential for the balance of the property. Auto-urban general residential allows for smaller, single-family detached and attached uses with a little bit higher density than suburban residential. The Planning Commission considered this item at its November the 2nd meeting, held a public hearing, and then voted to recommend its approval. One thing that is a little bit of an irregularity that I did want to point out is that we do have, in addition to the zoning ordinance that you'll be voting on, is also an amended annexation resolution. The previous annexation resolution that was approved by the city council back in June was tied to the zoning ordinance that went with the previous plan. So this is a new ordinance, and so this annexation resolution will tie into the new ordinance. As you know, annexation doesn't go into effect until after the companion zoning ordinance is approved. So this will, this will update that annexation resolution, so it's tied into this zoning ordinance if you choose to approve the zoning ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Brian Grover with SEC has a brief presentation that he would like to give you on the proposed
Mayor McFarland and members of the council, thank you for giving us the time to speak tonight. I am Brian Grover of SEC. I am here with John and Justin Harney from Harney Homes. Just to reiterate what Matthew was saying, the request is to include additional 7.3 acres into the previously requested annexation and previously approved. acres into the previously requested annexation and previously approved PRD of the Villis at Veterans. The site is located just west of the intersection of Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway. The current land use is primarily used for row crops and more pasture-type use, with residential property located on it as well. Some of the existing features on the site include a residential home, as well as a greenhouse and an accessory building, all three of which would be removed if this plan moved forward. The existing zoning around the site primarily consists of commercial along the Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway corridors. The existing 7.31 acres of the Villis at Veterans PRD consists of the southwest of the new boundary of the site with the additional land currently zoned RM within Rutherford County. We have some on- and off-site photos in and around the site. The existing intersection you see here is in front of Kroger along Veterans Parkway. The significance of this intersection is that this would be one of the main intersections into the site off of Veterans Parkway, and would be completing the fourth leg of that signal into the site. Here's a photo demonstrating the current use of the proposed site. Primarily, as we've stated before, it's just row crops and pasture. Some of the surrounding area for the site is primarily commercial, especially along the Veterans Parkway corridor and the Highway 96 corridor, as seen just north of the proposed, what would be the proposed intersection across the street to Kroger, as well as the three-tentant building just south of that. This proposal, as you will see in the previous plan and this one, is still dedicated to making sure that that corridor develops as a commercial along Veterans Parkway. The existing plan, as Matthew stated, was approximately 49 dwelling units. The density for the site was 6.89 acres. With the additional land and the additional units proposed in the plan, the overall density increased by .1. So as much as a large number seems to increase, the overall density remained relatively close to what it previously was. The plan adds about a half acre of additional open space to the site. One of the best, I guess you could say, features of this is that this amendment proposes a significantly more robust and diverse amenity package, as well as maintains the previous development standards approved with a previously approved PRD. The many package allows for an improved walkability throughout the site. The roadways throughout the site have been revised to all public streets within the city of Murfreesboro. And the townhomes would be part of an HPR regime, as well as maintained by a third-party HOA. The architectural characteristics remain the same, for the most part, throughout the site. Among these listed items, they will continue to have the minimum of two bedrooms. They'll include rear patios with six-foot privacy fences, as well as decorative front-entry The townhomes will continue to have the front elevations consist of stone and brick. Cement board will be utilized, but only in non-structural areas where the brick and stone would be more difficult to include. However, no home will be constructed primarily of or all of the cement board. It continues to comprise of alternating styles, colors, and materials to allow individuality throughout the neighborhood, but maintain a coherent neighborhood aesthetic. The development standards continue to remain the same as well. This includes signage seen in the locations on the plan here in red, as well as utilizing fencing along 96 to maintain the aesthetic of the developments within this region. Some of the previously approved amenities have been revised. There was a pavilion and playground in the previously approved plan. With this plan, they have been grouped closer together and moved to a more centralized location to promote usability throughout the entire site. Some of the additional amenities on site include pickleball, outdoor seating, as well as permanent placement concrete cornhole and ping pong tables made out of concrete. This is part of the additional and more robust part of the amenity package that adds a more diversity to the activity level, as well as the age range for the community for usable amenities. Dog park is also proposed for the previous plan, and it is located within close proximity to the pickleball court on the southwest side of the property to try and keep the high-activity level items close together. Access to the site, the primary access points remain the same, one coming from Highway 96 and the other from Veterans Parkway. As Matthew said, there are additional stubs to the surrounding neighborhood to help promote connectivity for the entire region. And these primary entryways are still dedicated to dedicating right-of-way for the installation of right-turn lanes, as well as turn lanes in and out of the development. The development still proposes the same buffers as before, to help mitigate any type of impacts to the surrounding property. Overall, the density slightly increased by 1/10 of a unit per acre. This amendment allows us to propose a more robust and diverse amenity package that provides a wider range for both age and activity level for the development. And it reverberates the previously approved standards and development standards from the previously approved PRD. That's all. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right. Seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ45.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
You still need to vote on the resolution.
I'm sorry. We need to vote on Resolution 22RA14 first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now need to consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ45.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into ordinances, ordinance. We have Item 12, Fiscal Year 23 Budget Amendment. Ms. Tucker?
Hi, thank you. You have an updated budget amendment on your desk to consider tonight. This amendment increases revenue and expenses for MED-funded road projects. We're also updating the community development budget to reflect carryforward grants and grant allocations for this year. Excuse me. We're adding to the solid waste budget for the limb and brush contract that y'all approved at last week's meeting. And then we also have a clerical error that we're requesting approval to correct the previous exhibits for the budget amendments approved earlier this year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Excuse me, mayor, I need to clarify something for the record on-
Yes.
-Item 11. The resolution number that you voted on was actually 22RA45. That was amending Resolution 22RA14. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
I don't feel like a judge. I will allow that.
It was an Auburn grad who pointed it out to me.
I will not allow that. All right, we'll move to Resolution 22R27, Schools Budget Amendment Number Four. This is Project Diabetes Grant. Director Duke?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm presenting a resolution for your approval that recognizes new revenue. Murfreesboro City Schools coordinated school health program was awarded a Project Diabetes Service Grant in the amount of $363,200 that will be used to resurface the existing tennis and play surfaces at five schools to create multipurpose recreational courts over the next three years. On October 11, the school board approved the budget amendment for one year totaling $142,600. These funds will be used to resurface the tennis courts at Irma Segal and Caseland Academy First, pay staff stipends to lead sports clinics to the school and the community, and cover the cost of sports equipment. In previous years, the next two years will be considered as part of our general purpose budget. Over the remainder of the grant period, courts at Mitchell Nielsen, Reeves Rogers, and Discovery School will also be addressed. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pickleball courts?
That, if the court will allow it, we will have it.
Awesome.
We're designing each one based on what's there.
If no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. All right, we'll move into closing documents for the sale of property for Notes Live. Mr. Tindall?
Yes, council. In last August, we approved a development agreement with Notes Live for the development of the Bourbon Brothers and Boot Barn Hall and the Sunset Music Coliseum. Sorry. These are the documents that effectuate that. There's been quite a bit of work and planning done thus far, so we're working very hard. Notes Live is working very hard to get this underway by the end of the year and to start construction in the beginning of next year. If there's any questions, we can certainly address those on the agreements. And I think we've had some offline discussions on the promissory note that we have and the need to reference back to the development agreement, just to make sure that the provisions in there for the timeline of the development and such are consistent with the development agreement. The two agreements, the promissory note and the development agreement, are consistent. And so we'll work with Notes Live and get that promissory note in. Mr. Mudd is here, representative of Notes Live. If you have any questions for them, I'm sure that he'd be more than happy to address them.
If no questions, I'll move for approval.
Can I confirm, did we get them to... Shut up. I know everyone's emailed back and said 6.4. I've read 6.4. But did we get the developer to agree to add it to the promissory note?
Yes. Come on up, Bob.
Good evening, mayor and council. Bob Mudd, Notes Live. We're happy to add the language from 6.4 in, or to appropriately connect the development agreement to the promissory note. The timelines are effectually, to have an LDP filed for by June.
Perfect.
And we have to start moving dirt within 60 days, and we've got to be serving chicken fried steak in 18 months.
Love it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great question. All right, we have a motion. Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, we have Bradyville Pike Reconstruction, Addendum Number Two.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. On September 13, 2012, the city entered into a professional service agreement for the design services of Bradyville Pike Reconstruction.
What year did you say?
2012. I wasn't here, though, mayor.
Okay.
I didn't start it.
I was just making sure. I thought it-
As part of the project's final design and right-of-way construction phases, the project has required completion of certain tasks not anticipated under the original professional service contract. Services beyond the original scope of work include additional right-of-way staking, two NIPA documents, two NIPA reevaluation documents, I'm sorry, modification to right-of-way plans, legal description, exhibit revisions, and additional design and coordination services. The professional service contract ceiling included the addition of addendum number one is currently set at $1,012,581. Addendum number two is for $112,321. This is where we're getting a little bit of government math. Of this total expenditure, a portion, 87466, is funded 80 federal, 20 local. The local portion of $17,493 is funded by the FY21 CIP budget. The remaining $24,855 is fully reimbursed by state and federal funds. The addendum increases the contract amount to $1,124,902. Staff recommends approval of this addendum, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Kerr?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Item 16, Bradyville Pike State Route 99 Widening Project, Amendment Four to the T-DOT contract. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you. The current agreement with T-DOT for the Bradyville Pike project funded the design, a portion of right-of-way phase, and construction. Amendment Number Four will fund additional design services as part of the project's final design and right-of-way acquisition phases. The amendment will add state and federal funds in an amount of $24,855 for the design phase and $1,488,800 for the right-of-way phase. As such, we anticipate that this project will be fully funded for development. The city has spent its maximum financial liability on this project. Staff recommends approval of this amendment with T-DOT. Available for any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into the agreement with S&amp;W Contracting for Traffic Signal Electrical Maintenance.
Thank you. The city annually contracts for installation and maintenance of traffic signals, school zone signs, and citywide electrical repairs for these equipments located along the 160 signalized intersections, 42 CCTV camera locations, and 25 school zones. The proposed contract is a one-year agreement and is renewable annually for a total of four additional years. The contract is unit-based in full scope, and cost of work varies depending on the maintenance required during the term of the agreement. Through the purchase process, S&amp;W Contracting was determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommends approval of this contract with S&amp;W, subject to the legal department's final review. Available for any questions.
If none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, you have the appointment of the Committee on Contributions for the Board of Trustees and the Investment of the Community Investment Trust.
The candidates are distributed based on input from council. There are seven members that was decided on last week. And the only change that we needed to make is the goal in the trust is to have the board not turn over more than a third every year. And so to do that with seven members, we needed to add a fourth initial term of four years. And that gave us a distribution on the board that allowed only a third to have to be reappointed in a given year. And that adds continuity for the committee as it goes forward and makes its decision. So those are assigned by random numbers, and you have the names and the terms before you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Need a motion to approve this-
Could you call the names for the public, who may not be aware of that, who the committee members are, please?
Let's see, for the, let's see, Reverend John Hinkle is a four-year term. After the initial term, each will serve three years. Reverend Hinkle will serve for four years. Lynn Lean will serve three years, Lyle Lynch three- Lael Lynch, three years. Wade Hayes, for two years. Ronnie Martin, for two years. Collier Andres Smith will serve a year, and Carl D. Montgomery will serve a year, and of course, all will be eligible for reappointment at the end of their term if council desires.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right. You have a fundraising beer permit in front of you.
We have a special event permit for Endura Athletics fundraising event on December 31st. The applicant's met requirements for a permit and is recommended for approval. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right. Any statements to be paid?
Yes, sir.
Any other business from staff? Any other business from council?
The tennis committee met today, I believe, for the first time, and I guess they are in initial discussions to move things forward out there at the Adams Tennis Complex. So, one of the board members had asked, and I think it's a smart thing to do, if we could extend the tennis professionals' contract through June 30th of 2023, since we only voted to extend it until the end of the year. So, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the pros' contract until June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion, any discussion? Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business to come before the council?
Sunday, 2:00, Christmas parade.
That's right.
Just wanted to remind everybody, show up is always a good crowd, and remind my colleagues to walk the grounds. I think you've all got, everyone's gotten an email about how we're, Steve McCluskey